All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'll come back to order. Next item on our agenda, I'm just gonna move this one item forward as we have some out of town guests with us. The Maryland Sun presentation, as long as our friends at Public Works will allow it. They will, okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. So Anya and Chris, would you mind coming forward and joining us up here?
Thank you.
Thanks so much for having us.
Absolutely.
We're enjoying being here. We've spent a lot of the day here. We went and visited one of your local solar installers and Chamber of Commerce, went to the library.
I said Chris.
Had some tea.
Sorry Cory.
So what we'd like to do is explain to you what our program is, who we are, what our program is, and let you have a little time to ask questions and do it fast so you have a lot of time to get to the Main Street redevelopment, which sounds like a big exciting project. And you can jump in anytime. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Our parent organization is called Community Power Network. It has its own website and all our work in Maryland is under the banner of Maryland Sun, which also has its own website. We have a grant from the Town Creek Foundation in eastern Maryland to do work on the eastern shore. Our mission is to promote the development of renewable energy, especially the types of renewable energy projects that have a local economic development. So what we really specialize is that overlay of renewable energy and local economic development. We have developed a really deep expertise in the last five years of a project that we call a solar co-op. You might have heard about it somewhere else, it's called Solarize, it's similar, but what we do is we help homeowners go solar. And we take them through the process from beginning to end. We support the homeowners through the decision-making and we help them save money. And the way we do that is first we do info sessions. We come to the community and we talk to people, you know, get a room in the library or wherever's the right room. And we explain solar, what are the economics, what's the technology, and what's the process? And we get people excited about going solar. And then if they want to go solar with our group to join, it would be the Salisbury Solar Co-op, they join online and we prescreen their roofs, make sure their roof is a good fit for solar. And then when we get enough people sign up, and that would usually be 20 to 40 homes, then we issue a request for proposal on behalf of the group. So that way, the request for proposal goes out, it's public, it's transparent, it's competitive, it's open to any company. We're absolutely dedicated to those principles. Then the group itself creates a selection committee. It's not us selecting the winner of the bid, they have a subset of the group to pick the winning bidder. And we meet with them, we help them evaluate the bids, we help them review all the proposals. They sign a confidentiality agreement to protect the companies. And then they pick a single installer to do the solar installs for all the members of the group. And by doing that process, we save everybody money. So what normally happens for a solar installer is they would go to maybe 15 houses before they get a sale. And it's your house, your house, your house, your house, your house. And then finally you decide to go solar. Meanwhile, they spend two or three days. What we do is we narrow down that whole process. We take their cost of finding a customer from thousands of dollars to hundreds of dollars, and then we pass that savings on to the homeowner. Now, we do take a $500 fee at the end of the contract and we tell everybody about that. It's absolutely transparent and that helps cover our costs. So it's a combination of the grant from Town Creek Foundation and the fee at the end if there's contracts signed is how we cover our education outreach costs. It's a process that works when we have a really strong community partner. And we could come in here and do it today without you guys, but that's not how we work. We always work with a community partner and sometimes our community partners are a municipality like the city of College Park or the city of Bowie.
City of Bowie, yeah, that's a current one.
Rockville, those are ones, we're actually in conversations with Chestertown right now, where the city itself and the municipality is our partner. We also did a really huge one in Blacksburg, Virginia last year, and it was this town of Blacksburg. And the partner helps us with outreach, with framing, how are we gonna talk about it? Where are we gonna hold the meeting? How do we let people know about it? And it makes it apparent to the people who participate that it's really a community-driven process. Sometimes our partners are nonprofits. We did one, for example, with the World Wildlife Fund and it was open to their members. Sometimes it's with university. One of our partners was the University of Maryland, College Park, and their sustainability office was our sponsor. And sometimes it's with community activists. So it could be four or five homeowners that really wanna go solar, they're like, "Help us through the process, make it easy for us," and they organize the co-op. So we have it in many different levels, but what we're here today is to see if you guys would be interested in being our community partner to do a project like that here. I'm wondering if I should stop and answer questions or is there something key that I missed?
Well, I wonder, just one question that I have is, could it be multiple entities that are your partner?
Absolutely.
Okay. The Y Combe Environmental Trust, the Homeowners Association, Salisbury University, city of Salisbury as well?
More the better, really, because each partner sort of reaches out to their community, to their list. So we would put on the website everybody's logo, all the partners. The lift for the partners is not a lot of work. It's get the word out, you know, have a couple conference calls, do a little bit of an outreach plan in the beginning, and then, you know, hopefully when we hold the meeting, you know, somebody like you or you would come to the opening and say, "Hey, we think solar's really great, this is a great idea." But that's, it's not like it's gonna cost a lot of time and energy and money, it's really something that comes quite easily unless you want to get involved. Some of our partners get so excited that they dive in deep and they're planning extra meetings and they're pitching stories to the press and, you know, so there's sort of a range of involvement, but the minimum is really, for a partner, is let your community know, put your logo on the website, and give input in the beginning as to, you know, how to frame it, how to talk about it, what the values are.
You know, I think there's a ton of value in that. As a communications partner, and, you know, it sounds to me like, like you said, a pretty easy lift.
Yeah, it's intriguing because I know those contracts are pretty confusing.
The contracts are pretty confusing.
The options for what you do with the power that you're generating.
And that's what's so important.
Overwhelming for people and they just don't do it because they don't know which way to go.
Exactly. Most homeowners, if they get as far as to say, "I wanna do this," they cut a couple bids and then they get paralyzed because you can't compare them, they're really confusing. And so because we're a nonprofit, we are as dedicated to the education as the contracts themselves. So for us, if we have, you know, 500 people attend info sessions, that's a win for us. So we really kind of peel back the layers. When people are done with us, they understand what the economics are, the technology. On our Blacksburg group, we answered 1,200, I think, 65 questions for members of the group. So we had like emails, and so we support people, we see ourselves as facilitators and sort of consumer advocates. So we wanna protect people in the contracts, make sure they get good price, good contract, good equipment, as well as, of course, we want them to go solar, but we want them to do it in a quality way that's gonna lead the industry stronger, healthier, you know, better employment, stuff like that.
So in the other Maryland communities that have, and, you know, you said since 2007, I think, and the other Maryland communities that you've partnered with, the University of Maryland, Hyattville, Baltimore, co-ops, at what stage is the actual physical development of, you know, the individual units, the solar units on people's homes?
Basically, in the beginning is sort of create the partnerships, then we have to create the partnerships, we'll set up a website, et cetera. That probably takes a month or so. Then there's a launch where we do info session, we might do two info sessions, that takes about a month or so. Then there, and if you get enough people to sign up, then you issue the request for proposal, select the installer. We continue to recruit people, another info session or two, and, but once the installer's chosen, the actual installs start happening. So say we decided today to do this, you could have installs in three months from now and the whole process was about a six to eight month process.
Okay.
So it's pretty, we try to keep it fairly constrained and part of it is, the other thing that homeowners really need is real deadlines. So everybody's too busy, you get this information, you think about it, you're like, "Oh, I don't wanna do it," so you have to have deadlines. And so we create a structure for taking people through the process. And lots of times people say, "Well, why don't you keep it open longer?" But what we find is people don't really sign up until they know that the deadline's there. And so it may be that we do one now and, you know, maybe we get 20 houses or 30 houses, but then all these people are coming up to you afterwards and saying, "Oh, I missed it." So then we can do another one next year if you want to, but you can decide that later.
Okay. And now, what I wanted to know also is, in those communities, how many have installed? How many have actually gotten to that state so far?
University of Maryland, for example, was one of our larger ones. We had, I think, about 150 people who signed up and at the end of it, I believe, about 50-plus signed contracts.
Okay.
Which is pretty typical. We see from the number of people who join the group to the people who end up installing is somewhere between 30 and 50 percent.
Okay.
And that's pretty common. That's a somewhat large group for us. Most of the time it would be in the DC area where we have some track record and folks recognize that, you know, we've done it before and they've heard of us, then that number would be usually somewhere between 60 to 100 people that join the group and, you know, 40 to 50 contracts if we're, you know, think we're going well.
Yeah, I heard you on WAMU the other day. I heard you on NPR.
Yeah, I was on the radio.
Wow.
Yeah.
The Kojio Namde Show?
Uh, I think it was something else.
You were on the radio.
Yeah, yeah. I've had on a few times lately.
Okay, so typically 30 to 50 percent actually participate.
Yeah.
That's interesting. Now, with regard to your partners, so like Salisbury University potentially, or Y Combe Environmental Trust, or the city of Salisbury, how do you develop that partnership? I mean, is there a vehicle to, you know, outline the responsibilities? Do you write an MOU or is it?
We have an MOU if people want that. We certainly have a document that just lays out roles and responsibilities. Some partners really want an MOU and for some it makes it more complicated, since we're not asking anybody to put up money, you know, it doesn't have to, with some municipalities, they prefer to have it more formal. And we do, we just recently won a contract with the Metropolitan Cog to do this kind of work for municipalities. And according to them, any municipality in the greater, you know, Maryland, Virginia, anywhere could actually ride on that contract if they wanted that kind of formality. So I don't know how you guys feel about that, but that was a very competitive process and they picked us above any other group that could do that.
I think that's a little outside of our territory.
I know, it's like way over there. It's, we do have an MOU and a document, so the main thing is that, you know, clear expectations, that you want, you don't wanna go into a partnership of any kind without, you know, us laying out what we're gonna do and the other parties.
That's helpful. I think if we're gonna, and I don't mean to dominate, but any questions you guys have, but the only thing that I was gonna say that, if we're, if we are going to enter into any sort of relationship, if you are gonna come into Salisbury, I think one of the partners should be the city of Salisbury, especially since it's not a financial partnership, it's just kind of a promotion and public awareness and public information partnership, that should go through the administration first, that there should be a, you know, an MOU with the, that goes through the administration first and then comes to us.
Uh-huh. So we work with Tom?
Work with Tom and the mayor and Public Works and then once they're comfortable with it, that can come to, that can come to city council.
To first sign off.
Yeah.
And then it seems to me that the thing to do is we'll keep talking to other partners. If any of you have ideas of other ones to bring in, we'll keep talking to them, but once we get it squared away with the city, then others can just join on, you know, add their logo.
Salisbury University.
Salisbury University.
Y Combe Environmental Trust, whoever.
Yeah, they could just add in, you know.
Okay.
Once we get the sort of backbone set up.
Got it.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Reed? Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming all this way. We appreciate it, of course.
Yeah, it's a pleasure.
First we'll let you get back on the road.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you too.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Okay.
When I did a search for that topic, I came up with, it was about four cultures.
off.
Yes, and unfortunately, it was under the weather at the time, but I understand a continued
And that made me think about the four culture task force, getting an update on that.
Getting an update.
discussion here as far as the design moving forward in terms of bike lane layout, the
Yeah, to know what's going on.
Yeah, it hasn't met in a while, but we should find out, you know, the last.
Yeah. What they came up with, if anything.
different scenarios that were looked at, and I think that's kind of where we're picking
Absolutely. Yes, next item on our agenda is the Main Street master plan.
up on. I guess the issues we've got in terms of the layout, how that would reconfigure around
Can we get this up and running?
Okay. Do we need to get that on?
We do need to get the projector on, don't we?
some of the impediments on the West Main Street as far as projections of building
Can we get the projector on? Please.
structures, the Department of Health Building would be one of them, and planters that are
Thank you. Hey, how are you?
along that route, because it's controlled within an easement, which you can kind of
Good. How are you?
Great, how you doing?
Good to see you.
see with the colored, what color is it?
Nice to meet you.
Oh my gosh.
Okay.
Blue, sorry.
Okay.
Blue colored line that would need to be acquired to try to get the widths that we would need for the dual bike lanes.
Okay.
And adjustments that would be need to make in terms of the landscaping type patterns that were there. You can see the blue area, which is the, where the trees, streetlights would be located.
Yes.
And then you have the green areas where you have the filtration type systems that are there and intermixed with the parking. And obviously, we want to preserve the number of parking spaces that we want to have there because of something.
Mike, can you pull the microphone a little bit closer?
Oh.
I know you're back to health.
Still working.
Yeah. Doesn't sound like it.
Yeah. So the number of parking spaces we want to preserve in the design, which I think is 90, if I remember correctly.
Yes, total on the whole street.
Yes. So one of the challenges is the fact that we do not control the full right-of-way width on the side, as Amanda's showing on there, to be able to utilize the width that would be necessary to add the two bike lanes, the two five-foot bike lanes there. And as the design is currently set up, it's a shared bike lane with the traffic lanes that are in there now, a share, which we don't have any dedicated two bike lanes coming into this area, so it's not like we're contiguous to something that we're doing. But it gives different options that we have to think about. As it's proposed, we are, we have the shared areas. One of the things we did look at was the speed in this area. We put, did a traffic study out there and the average speed within Main Street right now is 20 miles an hour. So you don't have the kind of speeds that, you know, that would be a threat to bike, sharing bike lanes.
What are we looking at here on the screen? This seems to be a proposed dedicated bike lane.
Do you want me to explain it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Before I get to what's on the screen, the design as it stands right now includes a 12-foot shared lane, an eight-foot parking lane in both directions. So that's approximately 40 feet of pavement, two 12-foot shared lanes and two eight-foot parking lanes. Now, what you're looking at on the screen here is two 10-foot travel lanes, two five-foot bike lanes, and two seven-foot parking lanes. So it's about 44 feet, as you can see right here, this is about 44 feet of pavement. So it's four extra feet of pavement. And the way we got that four extra feet is the right-of-way line goes right in front of those planters approximately on the south side. So to get the extra four feet, we have to remove those planters and essentially put sidewalk up into the face of building on the south side of East Main Street. These areas in white, and I'll show you a picture of those, are stairs and a glass vestibule and things that we can't change. They have to stay there based on how those buildings are made. So to do that, the proposal, if we were gonna go that route, is to still have our landscape strip. So that blue strip is where all our trees are going, all our benches, streetlights, trashcans, all of the hardscape features are going in that strip. And the blue is the designation for where we have our porous pavers. So in order, you can see these dimensions right down here are showing you, if we did not use that area for a sidewalk, we would only have 3.2 feet right there outside of those stairs, three and a half feet right there. So we don't have a wide enough sidewalk width unless we use that blue. That blue landscape area is four and a half feet. So essentially, in those areas, we would have no benches, no streetslights, no trees, no trashcans, no anything. And you can see, we started it back here and we would end it just past those obstructions. So we have that area as well as the health department. And let me show you what these two areas.
How much distance is that between the two?
That is, from the stationing up here, that's a little bit more than 50 feet. We're probably right around 100 feet right there. And then here, we're probably about 50 feet, maybe 75 feet there. And let me show you what exactly we're talking about. Just, I know you all are familiar with these places and, sorry that that just came in sideways.
Now, those distances, the assumption that the planters would come out too, that are in those right-of-way area.
Yes, that's exactly right. And I'll show you those in just a second too. So here's, these are our two major obstructions, is this staircase and that glass vestibule. And we really, like I said, both of those need to remain. I'm gonna go to an easier way to look at this. In addition, you can see in front of the health department, they have pillars that stick out, and again, they would need to remain. But all of these landscape areas along East Main Street in front of these buildings would need to come out. That is, that would be sidewalk area. I think I have a better picture of that as well. Okay, you can kind of see it from this angle as well. So all of these planters, we're assuming would have to be removed because then the sidewalk would actually go up to the face of the buildings here to get the right sidewalk width. And even like in one example, this sign hangs too low, that would need to be moved or else a pedestrian walking through would hit that sign because now you're actually walking up against the face of the sidewalk. So this pillar would remain and the steps and the vestibule would remain, but everything else up to the face of those buildings would have to be removed.
Amanda, has AMT weighed in on at all their perspective on the planters in terms of what they contribute, if anything, positively?
No, we haven't asked them that question, so no. At this point, they, we were always under the assumption they would stay. So we have not asked their opinion on removing those.
We'd still have plantings, they would just be in that strip, except for those sections where we can't.
Maybe on the other side, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So here, here's a.
Or on the other side of the sidewalk, yeah.
Right.
Well, it was a really hard good, really.
Yeah.
Assuming you've got room in those other sections where you'd have to, you'd lose that, where you have the knockouts.
Right, we would lose that in these areas.
Right.
Right, so this is just again showing, you know, we would still have those steps protruding into the sidewalk area and that these planters would be taken out.
Can we go back to the site plan? You know, I'm not opposed to the conversation about the planters and all, but I still maintain that if we're at all gonna talk about making this work and ensuring that we're doing it in an effective and safe way, then we look to the property owner to the north.
Let's talk about that a little bit.
Okay.
I'm gonna scroll. So we have two property owners to the north, one of them being the county government, and this is the old courthouse here. So we looked at this a little bit since our last meeting, let me scroll down so you can get your bearings. So this is the intersection with North Division Street, and this all along here is a significant retaining wall, and then this piece is a retaining wall. So to gain that four feet, we would be cutting back to approximately right here. We do feel like that tree would be lost and we would have to redo that retaining wall. There's a significant grade difference in this area. So there would be impacts to the trees in the yard of the courthouse. And then down at the post office property, which I'm not sure that this drawing went that far, their steps go to the edge of the right-of-way. So we would have to redo their front area and their steps as well.
So we'd have concerns about historic on the courthouse property, potential impacts there we'd have to deal with. And then the concern with the post office is dealing with Uncle Sam.
And that would still only get us four feet?
And that still is only getting us four feet.
Which gives us the seven-foot parking space and how many feet would the bike lane be?
Five feet. The bike lanes are five feet wide, that would be a 10-foot travel lane and a seven-foot parking lane.
And the seven-foot parking lane is less, one foot less than what's in our standards.
And Ms. Miller suggested.
Here's the post office. So there's the steps of the post office. They have, they're sidewalks and steps that come down and then a couple steps right at the edge of the right-of-way.
Right.
I think I'll tell you, we would not look forward dealing with the US government trying to get a right-of-way.
Okay.
We'll probably all be gone before we get there.
Yeah, I'd almost rather have Route Canal before that.
Okay. See, I would've guessed that they'd be easier to work with than the property owners, but maybe not.
I did want to show you how many easements would need to be acquired, and of course, this is the county property and the post office property. And then we numbered the number of parcels here and then listed below who owns them just so we could get an idea of who all we would need to be negotiating with as far as easements go. So in this first block, I mean, you can see why we were talking about the north side, there's 15 properties, I think all of which are owned by different entities. And then in the second block, there are some duplicates, but still a significant number of different property owners.
Yeah, I understand, less property owners on the north side, but then if you're dealing with the south side on one end about this and then the other, you're gonna get a jogging type situation.
Right.
And one of the things I think can be in mind with this is that when you look down Main Street from 13, you see a contiguous thing. It's like looking at the old plantation mansion with the trees and everything lines up very well.
I like that.
And if you're jogging things back and forth, it's gonna have some disconnection there.
So I still, so I see 21 unique property owners on the south side. Okay.
Yes.
Any thoughts, comments?
Yeah, could I just switch gears for a minute?
Sure.
Assuming we could get all of the easements, assuming everything else, correct me if I misspeak, we're gonna end up with two five-foot bike lanes, two 10-foot driving lanes.
Yes.
And two seven-foot parking lanes.
That's correct.
I have a real safety concern. And it's a serious, so serious that the other day I took my trusty little tape measure and I went down and just did a random check. And if you went from the wheel of the car or SUV to the mirror of the vehicle, which is what sticks out, what would stick out the furthest, over half of the cars would have been over the seven-foot line. And the, if you take a 10-foot driving lane with two vehicles going 20 miles an hour, 15 miles an hour, and you have two bikers that are going, it's very tight. It is extremely tight. And I think from a safety point of view, I can't support that. And, and if you're jogging things back and forth, it's going to have some disconnection there.
So I still, so I see 21 unique property owners on the south side. Okay.
Yes.
Any thoughts, comments?
Yeah, could I just switch gears for a minute?
Sure.
Assuming we could get all of the easements, assuming everything else, correct me if I'm, if I misspeak. We're going to end up with two five-foot bike lanes, two 10-foot driving lanes.
Yes.
And two seven-foot parking lanes.
That's correct.
I have a real safety concern. And it's, it's, it's a serious, so serious that the other day I took my trusty little tape measure and I went down and just did a random check. And if you went from the wheel of the car or SUV to the mirror of the vehicle, which is what sticks out, what would stick out the furthest, over half of the cars would have been over the seven-foot line. And the, if you take a 10-foot driving lane with two vehicles going 20 miles an hour, 15 miles an hour, and you have two bikers that are going, it's very tight. It is extremely tight. And I think from a safety point of view, I can't support that configuration.
Well, give you an example, the, we need to do some temporary work when we're under construction. And one of the issues with the, having streets blocked off, we, our, our standards are 13-foot width for emergency vehicles and getting through there. If we can go with a 10-foot five minimum, we can still maintain two lanes of traffic during construction, but those are absolute minimums. So we're talking about going 10-foot permanently as opposed to going 10 and a half feet with two lanes temporarily during construction block by block.
But generally, you have a flagger too, right? When you do the construction.
Well, if we, if, yeah, if you have any encroachment over the line.
Slow, you'd have slow warning signs and things. I, I do, it's just a concern regardless of whether we can get the easements or not.
Yeah, and, and I, I don't disagree. I don't, I don't mind, I don't mind 10-foot lane, travel lanes. You know, I think the tighter the travel lane, the better frankly, it slows them down. But particularly in areas where you, you do expect bike traffic. But in concert with, or adjacent to a bike lane and putting a bike lane in between the parking, that's when you got a real, you got a real problem.
It's what's going to give. It's going to be the bike or cyclist.
Really dangerous. At some point, and I know he hasn't requested, you know, the opportunity to speak, but at some point, I'd like to invite Mr. Drew to come to the podium and speak about, you know, the representative of the biking community.
You can fill that out later.
And my, and my comments, by the way, are more for the protection of the bikers than there are for the cars.
Yeah, no, I understand. Yeah, please, I, I think it'd be a good way in at this point.
Sure. Well, thank you, thank you. I guess a, a couple points of clarification. The minimum bike lane width recommended for a street of this speed is four feet. Five-foot lanes being provided and a five-foot lane is adequate space for parked cars. The reason is, you typically have about a three-foot, they call it the door zone, but the place where doors open up. So it still gives you two feet to, to ride through and still not depart from the bike lane. This is, you know, what's being shown as a proposed bike lane diagram is very much in keeping with what is being planned for, for West Main Street because the dedicated bike lane will be provided on West Main Street and is going to, going to feed right into this area. But one of the reasons why I've been a proponent of this type of design more than anything else is that of, of our overall goal for the city to become more bicycle friendly and, and encourage people who are interested in cycling but concerned about the safety effects to get out and try it. I, I forwarded each council member a, a copy of a, of a study that was done in Los Angeles, and it showed that cycling rates for areas of their city when they did bike counts increased in places where there were dedicated bike lanes. And sheriffs really didn't do a lot to, they didn't do as much to, to encourage people to cycle. So, so I see this more from an advocacy standpoint, that I think it's really important for our town to have some dedicated bike lanes. I also see what, what the, the good work that's being done for the design of Main Street as being an example of everything that we're going to do in the rest of the town. So I, I would like to see this, this happen for those reasons. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Questions for Mr. Drew? Thank you. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I agree in principle regarding the application of bike lanes to the Main Street project and throughout. There are some differences, I think, given the dimensions of the bike lanes here versus the dimensions of the bike lanes on West Main and the dimensions of parking and travel lanes on West Main as well. So the only alternative thought that I had, which the more I think about it, I don't think works because it actually creates a few other additional components that have to be added, would be to actually flip the bike lane and everything from the blue line to the edge of the curb, which would be, you know, the planted area and the parking and the curb. And it would essentially create a protected bike lane on the inside adjacent to the, adjacent to the sidewalk, you know, sidewalk only. The only problem with that is, you know, you'd also have to add edge of curb and edge of curb, you'd get another probably, what, four to six inches on each side there. It'd be really cool to have a protected bike lane, but I think that would actually add more things and not actually alleviate the problem.
I, I mean, the way I'm looking at it is with the two bike lanes, the parking and everything, you've got an extra four feet of pavement that you're dealing with. I look at this as, the focus, the main focus is not vehicles and bicycles, it's pedestrian traffic. That's really going to make people come downtown and look at all the events that we have. So we want to maximize that pedestrian space as much as possible. And, you know, how it funnels into the phase where we go up into the county and have that amphitheater. So that's kind of what I'm looking at. To me, I think it's compatibility with the low speeds we've got downtown. We have the biking racks, so the bicyclists and the cars, they're coming into downtown. They're parking, they're getting out, they're walking, they're getting to these stores and utilizing these services. That's really, I think, the focus, what we were looking at with this.
Another thing that we brought up at one point that I want to reiterate is the thermoplast bicycle symbols, you know, wondering if we can do the green or, you know, some color that corresponds to whatever color the route is or some way to, to highlight that in the bike lane on West Main and, you know, however it's executed on East Main to, to highlight the bikability of the route as well.
We've got that grant for the wayfinding, so that'll be something that we'll flesh out in terms of that and be able to apply that into, so it'll be consistent throughout the city. So I guess what we're looking for as, as art designers moving ahead, we want to keep him on track with our schedule. We, as Public Works, would like to proceed with the design as AMT has laid out so that we can keep to that schedule and get this project going. If we do decide to make changes in terms of the bike lanes, it's going to require a change order for that design. It's going to delay us in terms of obtaining these right-of-ways and easements. One of the questions will come out in terms of negotiating these easements. Are we going to pay these people for these easements in order to get them? That's all we, we'll need to know, there's negotiating parameters. And I think initial numbers we had as far as the design was around $50,000. We don't have that in our budget. We would have to come in for a budget amendment and get that squared away, so.
Does it change the construction budget?
Yes, it will because we'll be tearing out those planters. We don't know, I think one of the things I know when Matt was out, he noticed that was that when you tear those planters out, you may be exposing some of the foundation of the building. That may have to be athletically dealt with as well as, you know, the efforts associated with, you know, modifications, again, the planters and I don't know whether the overall cost would change in terms of trying to juggle things around a little bit in order to make things fit. But yes, there would be, there would be some additional construction costs we see.
Other questions, comments from council?
I would love to see the bike lanes there in both directions, but I have to agree with Jack. I'm just not comfortable with it, with the distances and, I mean, I already see now what happens when there's a truck coming down, there's a delivery truck even, and a car. You know, even the little pharmacy midget car and a truck. There, there are challenges sometimes if somebody's getting out of their car or walking to their car or something. I, I don't, I don't know that it's much safer with the sheriffs versus dedicated lanes, but when you're narrowing the parking spaces and narrowing the travel lanes and, you know, we're going to be like New York City where you have to fold your mirrors in every time you get out of your car, they're going to be gone when you come out. Or they're going to take out a cyclist's or car, you know, it's going to hit them. So I'm just, I don't think we have the space to do it. It's just too narrow.
So, you know, I, I think based on what we're hearing, and, and I, I would agree that it seems like it's going to be too difficult to achieve this on, on this piece of, this stretch of Main Street. That said, I think it shouldn't discourage us from ensuring that we are including dedicated bike lanes in every project possible and where we're designing it into our system. You know, another stretch that's really important to me that sits on council's pending items list is the Fitzwater component, you know, which is an extension of, of West Main in the same corridor from the west side into the city. So if we can, you know, on those projects, ensure that we are including dedicated bike lanes where we can't on this stretch of 13, you know, I think that would be, you know, a, a good step forward for the bikability of our city. And, you know, looking at our complete streets policy and, you know, eventually adopting our complete streets ordinance, you know, we need to ensure that we're designing a whole system, a system that is designed for pedestrians, a system that is designed for cars, and a system that is designed for bikes and their integration. So I think, you know, although it's disappointing that it's so difficult in this stretch of, of Main Street, you know, I'm eager to see the West Main Street portion get a dedicated bike lane. I'm eager to see all of the bike infrastructure go in, including, you know, bike racks and hopefully a bike share system one day. And I'm eager to see the rest of the Main Street corridor, maybe even East Main Street on the other side of 13, the remainder of East Main Street actually get dedicated lanes.
Is there any opportunity on either side, Market or the other side, to, to do dedicated for this section? Dedicated lanes?
Like cir, like circle and Market?
Market up at this end or the one that runs by the court?
Calvert?
Calvert, thank you.
Calvert's pretty tight.
Yeah.
Calvert is pretty tight. Market, on the other hand, has on-street parking.
Because if they, if we could get dedicated on the next block and then they just jog over.
People use it, that on-street parking down by Avery Hall and Allen and Sharif though. You know, up by, up by Feathered Companions, they don't use it so much, but they use it down by Allen and Sharif and Avery Hall.
Merrill Lynch and those areas.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if we could, I don't know. But anything to slow down traffic on Market Street would be good because it's, people fly down Market Street.
That might be something worth looking at to cover this stretch and then have the, the other stretch because it's just a jog over.
Right. Yeah, that's what she said, Councilman Day. Focus, a lot of focus I see is that we're creating these routes that funnel the bicycle traffic into the downtown from all the different directions. You have that, and that builds that interest in generating that traffic because you're creating that destination to get to.
And while we're talking about that, you know, we, we've got, we have the funding in place for the red route Riverside, you know, yellow on South and blue on Vine. Is that right? Am I getting that right? You know, that work was scheduled for this year as well. Do we have a timeline?
Well, they're under contract. We need a few good weather days so they can put down the thermoplastics. So Paul had spoken to that, the vendor that's going to do that work, and I think we are targeting April, mid-April now, Paul?
If, if the weather holds out.
So it's contracted and ready to go as soon as we can.
Our, our track record on weather has not been...
No, we need to be 50 degrees.
Yeah.
Okay.
I said yesterday, whatever Mother Nature's been mad about, I wish you'd just let it go.
But, but that will be done this spring.
All right, excellent.
All right, we will continue proceeding and giving you updates as we move forward.
And there were quite a few other comments, you know, two weeks ago whenever we actually met last. All of those have been incorporated in AMT's notes?
Yes, we have, yeah, we have our notes and AMT's notes, and usually after these meetings, we have conference calls with them and just go through everything. So yes, we have all those noted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think you had asked too about starting discussions with county on that phase, so we're going to start working on that.
Okay, great. Yeah, County Executive Governor was here and, you know, sounded like he was open to a conversation.
Good, it's a good start.
That's right. Excellent.
He did say, was sorry he came in at the end.
Yes, that's true. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is the plumbing permit fee increase recommendations. Mr. Holland?
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
Yeah, do you have assistance?
Periodically, I go through and check out our permit fees to see if, you know, we're, we're in line with what we should, should be charging, what other communities are charging. From what I've, from what I've seen, our plumbing permits, gas permits, and well permits fee need to be adjusted. The last time they were adjusted was back in 2006 as far as gas permits. I don't know if they've ever been adjusted since I've been here. Or the well permits, which is $25, and the gas permits $20. What I'm recommending is that we increase, increase the plumbing permit by $2 per fixture. As you can see in my handout, I have a current breakdown of the plumbing permit fees and a proposed plumbing permit fee. I'm also recommending that we, that we create a, a gas permit fee similar to a plumbing permit fee where we have a flat fee plus we charge by, by a fixture, fixture charge, and increase the well permit fee from $25 to $50. Purpose of this, one, one thing we, we're sending people out to do inspections and, you know, it's part of covering our costs. And $20 really, you know, is not, you know, covering that, covering that cost of not just inspection, inspector going out, but also the administrative association that has to process it and issue it and so forth. On another note, I'm also proposing a change of use fee, $50. With the 2015 Maryland Building Performance Standards, that's going to be coming out, I'll be coming to you probably sometime around June or July with those, the new building They are, where am I? They're incorporating requirements for the issuance of a new certificate of occupancy for an occupancy under warrant change, which we, for years, we've been doing that. Someone come in, they're taking over a new space, but they're not really doing any construction or don't need a permit fee, but still we send someone out to ensure, you know, it meets the minimum requirements. We issue them a certificate of occupancy. So with that in mind, I'm proposing this, you know, $50 fee. And again, I'll also go through some of the cities here in the state of Maryland. What they're charging, you'll see Annapolis, Hagerstown, Cedar Rockville, Town Ocean City Eastern, and always turn to Greensboro, North Carolina, they have a really good website. And you can see where City of Salt is very compares with the other cities. That's, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Comments?
Yeah, I do. We are in a economic situation where we need to be encouraging people to build. We've been stagnant for a while now. We want small businesses to succeed, and I just am questioning the timing of this considering that we're currently performing and providing these services now.
I would agree with most of that, but if we're losing money on providing those services, if we're not covering our costs, then I, I think we need to look at that, but like the ones we're not charging for, the, the change of occupancy. But I'm wondering, when I see the well permit fee, for instance, go from $25 to $50, can we justify that 50? It's a fee, so we have to be able to show that that's, there's a nexus to our actual costs on that. Have we been losing $25 on every one of these that we're doing for how many, however many years? Or, and can we actually justify that $50 fee?
Yeah, I, I think we can. When a couple of years or a year and a half or so ago, when I came to you all, when we established mechanical inspection, that, that was a point that was made by, you know, Council, Councilwoman Cohen, that I had to justify this. And we're charging a $25 fee for a mechanical permit, and we're not doing any inspections. It's done through third-party inspections. And that's pretty much covering our costs, issuing the permit, mailing the permit, or getting the permit out to the contractor.
That's without ever getting in the car.
That's without ever getting in the car and going out there.
That's, that's, not ever going out there. So, I mean, all, all the mechanicals are third-party.
And if I could add too, in preparation for the FY16 budget, I asked all of the department heads, which is typically called for in the code, to go through and look at any fees that they were charging and make sure that they were recovering the appropriate amount of money for the service being provided. And the $25 fee that you have currently is, you know, likely not enough. So, you know, you might could break that out, I suppose.
Well-
Well, that was just the most glaring one to say, okay.
To Mr. Stevenson's point, to, you know, if I were in your shoes, I'd, you know, I'd ask staff to do the same thing, and I, I think it makes perfect sense. And, you know, to your, to your points, Mr. Holland, you know, I think these are reasonable numbers. But ultimately, you know, we participate in, with the county, the county, the city, and the chamber in this Economic Development Action Team. One of the topics that they're talking about right now is how to make our, all of our permitting structures, but the fee itself and how we bill more user-friendly, more, you know, to be better at sort of customer service wholesale. And, you know, I think in, in this environment, as Mr. Heath is saying, in this environment, what we want to do is be uber-competitive. We want to be easier to work with than the guy next door. And I think this is one of those situations where we very well may, we very well should be charging these rates that are proposed, and we very well may get to the point where we can charge them, but we want to do so in a sort of a wholesale fashion, and I think in a, in a well-structured way, that it's not just an increase in the fee rate. But if, if the fee is going to be increased, then it's part of a package where it's becoming much easier to work with, you know, the, the city or the city and the county jointly, you know, it becomes much easier for me to apply for all of the things I need to apply for, you know, when I'm going to work with these multiple government agencies in, in this community. So, you know, my, my sense is it would be better to hold off on something like this until we get to a point where, you know, one, the economy's starting to roll, people are starting to build once again, and, and once we've found answers through that Economic Development Action Team group, and once we've actually developed a plan on how to, how to begin to implement those changes that they're discussing right now. And, and, you know, some of the things that have been discussed there are, you know, right sizing the fees, you know, which may mean up, may mean down, but regardless, the, the mechanism by which you do that, that has also been discussed, is is there a way to reduce the number of times that you're getting charged fees? Is there a way to say there's, you know, one point of, one point of entry and, you know, you write one check, or, you know, or you can write it in four parts at various stages in the process, rather than saying, you know?
But you know what it all is up front, you know, piecemealing it.
Rather than saying, right, a piecemeal-
Every time you walk in the door, bring a check.
Right. Which just, you know, which just degrades the relationship. When I have to write you a check, I like you a little bit less, you know what I mean?
Especially if it's $25 here. You feel like you're being nickelled and dined to death. Now, the caution that I would give here, the challenge is that we have to make sure that we remember when the economy picks up and when we complete these actions-
Thank you.
-with the task force and we, we get better at these things, that we revisit this, because I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, okay, it was probably needed to go to 30 probably five years ago.
Probably.
And somebody said, oh, $5, not worth worrying about, and then $10, and now we're looking at doubling it just to catch up. And just like with the Bay Bridge, when it went from $250 to $6, everybody went, you know, if you've been raising it incrementally all along, it would have been easier to adjust and less painful. But if you wait and you wait and you wait and you end up with doubling the fees, people get upset.
Is, and is there a way to tie fees to other indicators?
Well, I go back to metrics. We should know what, what our actual costs are, which I assume you do. But I think that those things, we need to, we need to, you need to be able to come to us. I'll, I'll be honest with you, the thing that turns me off is when I hear, well, I've been looking at this and we haven't done it in so many years.
Yeah.
I, I need this money because I'm, I'm losing X number of dollars and here's the backup material for that kind of thing. Because in this economy and where we are right now, the message we're, we send is as important as the money we get, you know, or don't get. And, and I, I do have a concern, and I, I agree with both my colleagues in the fact that once we get, we find out where our customer service is going to end up, that we come back and we revisit this. I have no issue with that at all.
One of the things that we did when I first came on council was something I'd picked up from somewhere else I was, and that was separating out fees from ordinances like we did with the false alarm and, and other things. Because the idea behind that was that every year at budget, when they're putting together their budget, they would revisit those fees. And they, they're calculating their personnel costs and their gas and all the other things right then, so it's all handy. And you're comparing that, is what it's costing me close to what I'm charging? Is it more, is it less? Is it justified? Do I need to make an adjustment? And as part of the budget ordinance, all of those fees would be listed and would be adjusted at that time. That way, it's done annually and incrementally as our budget, as our costs go up. When it's most obvious at budget time, that's when the fees are adjusted.
Yeah, that, that makes perfect sense to me, adjusting them, you know, one cumulatively once per year and analytically at budget time, and discussing all of them and the reasons why we would change them or not change them, and their cumulative impact on the budget.
You know, if things, if, if the economy turns really, really well, and all of a sudden he's inundated with permit applications, makes, it makes sense. He, he doesn't have enough people or resources to handle the situation. In this economy, I'll bet you, if you look back six years, you're handling a lot less than you used to handle. Because there are just not permits aren't being asked for, because housing starts are so, are so down, not just housing, but any building starts are down. So I, I think it is a timing issue.
And that's not to say that this isn't a meritorious, you know, proposal. You know, chances are it's spot-on, but, you know, I think we, we do want to be very careful about being competitive right now.
Okay. Yeah, I would just add, if I could, that, first of all, I appreciate Mr. Holland taking the time to go through and, and check these fees, and that for the most part, with the exception of some of them that have increased by 50%, the, the increase is, is minimal, and you might be looking at a typical single-family home, not much more than, you know, maybe $20 or $30. It's just a couple of dollars for a, you know, water closet, bathtub, what have you. But I think we understand the takeaway. We'll, we'll go back and reanalyze the fees, and then I don't think you're going to see it as a holistic package this year for preparation of the-
Understood.
FY16 budget, but in '17, we'll, we'll try to look at it inclusively. I went through the revenue projections with Mr. Corddry just last week, and as you know, it's a very long list, so we'll, we'll work to, to try and get that done next year.
Great. And, you know, I would, I would encourage you to, to keep this and to, you know, to continue to tie it to needs and to the rate at which, you know, we're seeing the economy grow or not grow. And, and I would, you know, encourage you to continue to bring this proposal through the administration, you know, as we watch what's happening out there in the economy.
You might also, as you're going through this process, having, having the department heads going through this process, Tom, start a list of what all of those fees are, so that in '17, you don't have to do that all over again. You could start to, and, and we could know. And even if we saw the list this year, because there are so many of these kinds of things buried in the code, there's no way anybody can remember everything that's there. And that's how this happens, is that we forget about it, we just go on and keep charging, you know, what we've always charged, and then, whoa, wait a minute, I'm bleeding money here, why?
The spreadsheet, spreadsheet guru of Mr. Corddry has already put all of that together, so we can take a look. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Corddry.
How are you?
Good evening, everyone.
Excuse me, do we still need Mr. Tillman?
I don't know on this one. It's too complicated for me to, to judge. That's a probably. Mr. Cordry.
Okay. What we've brought to you this afternoon is an ordinance that would reallocate some of the 2003 CDA bond proceeds. The projects that the funds would get reallocated to includes a city park tennis court lighting upgrade, and, and also some improvements to the marina. And I have some sheets that describe the, the projects. If they were in, if they weren't in the packet, would you like me to distribute?
They've been in a previous council bracket.
We've been before, council already-
We've all seen them in the past.
Pretty much up to date on the projects?
I'll take copies if you have.
Yes, I should, certainly.
I don't have them in front of me, so.
Sure. Tennis court.
Thank you.
The proj, the projects that had leftover proceeds included the Springfield Circle Storm Drain, the Mill Street Storm Drain, and then some from the South Baptist Storm Drain. So the total of the proceeds coming from those projects include $75,000 that we're redirecting to these two.
Okay. $75,000, is that what it was?
Total, yes. 50 for the marina and 25 for the, for the lighting.
Okay. For some reason, I thought it was 50 for the marina and 40 for the lighting. That may have just been my faulty memory. Okay. Are there questions from council? Did, did, so, and, and I understand that this was held up at bond council for a while. So this is signed off by bond council and ready to go finally?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Can't blame it all on our bond council.
And I didn't mean to.
Yeah, no, CDAs will give more, give more credit to the CDA bond council.
Okay, all right. We'll happily do that.
There you go. Was the total leftover $75,000, or is there still one part there?
There, there are still some small amounts that are left over, and there, there are a couple of pending projects. And so in one final swoop, we'll be sure to choose a project that would exceed the amount so that it's, it's done in one final allocation.
Okay.
But we don't have shovel-ready project that we would want to do.
There's always something.
What, what our game plan is, since there's a couple of projects that aren't, that are still pending, they aren't complete here.
Oh, okay.
We want, we're waiting until we have, we only want to do it once more.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council? All right, consensus to move this to legislative session?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you, Keith.
All right. I know it has been a long day, but we actually finished an hour early. Any comments for the good of the order?
Just one. Tom, if we could get an update from the foreclosure task force, whether they're still meeting, what they, what's what? We haven't heard anything back since we formed it, and I'm just curious.
Okay.
And as council rep, you know, I was invited to two meetings, haven't been, haven't seen anything since.
I was on it, I should resign.
Oh, yeah, you were, that's right.
I didn't get any, I mean-
There's two meetings.
There's two meetings.
Okay.
Well, maybe we need to look at whether that should be reformulated or-
Well, it was sunset, too. It was only active for a limited period of time, and then it automatically sunset.
Right. But if they didn't-
Probably doesn't technically exist.
Did they not have time to complete the tasks? Since we-
I'll reach out to the chair.
In fact, I think in the ordinance, it required a report back to us.
It did. I'll reach out to the chair.
I, I'll look into it.
Thank you.
Great. Anything else? All right, we're adjourned. Good evening.